All right, I'll call this meeting to order. We're here for the City of Yukon, City Council Meeting and the Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. It is May the 21st, 2024, 6:30 PM. We're gathered here at the Council Chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street here in Yukon, Oklahoma. Today, we have Pastor Woody Burpo from Family Church to give our invocation, followed by the flag salute. Please rise if you're able.
All right, will you join me in prayer? Lord, thank you for today. God, thank you for an incredible city that we get to live in. God, thank you for all of these men and women that serve of their time, give up of their time to lead us. God, I just pray, Lord, that you would continue to bless schools as they're getting ready to end, all the teachers, God, getting a much-needed break that they need. God, I pray that you would bless them as they're finishing up the school years, God. Pray for all the business owners, God. I just pray that their businesses would grow and thrive, God, here in our city. God, I just pray for all the residents, God. Pray that you would be with them and that you'd help them. God, everybody that's in our city that's in need, God, I pray that we that can help would help, God, and that we would continue making Yukon the great city that it is. In Jesus' name, amen.
Drive me in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Pillmore?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Shriver?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
At this time, we'll review the first item, which is to consider a motion to appoint Mitchell Horton as the acting city manager for the City of Yukon. Still moved?
Second.
Seeing no discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we have an item to hold a hearing to receive input from the public regarding the 2024-2025 City of Yukon Yukon Municipal Authority Budget. Now opening the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin your comments. Please step to the podium as well. Do we have any members of the public that would like to provide input on the budget? Seeing no additional comments, I move to close the public hearing. At this time, we have two proclamations. I'll step down below. Thank you to the Wheatley family and also to Councilwoman Selby for bringing this proclamation to the council. I'll read it now. Whereas James Albert Buddy Al Wheatley was a graduate of Yukon High School and of the University of Oklahoma in 1919, who served his country with distinction as an Army Lieutenant commanding infantry training during World War I. And whereas Buddy Al returned to Yukon after the war to become a business and civic leader in the community, owning the hardware department of the Mulvey Brothers Store, then later as president of the Southwest Hardware Company, treasurer of the First Christian Church, the Yukon American Legion Post, Yukon High School Alumni Association, the Yukon Cemetery Association, Yukon Community Fair Association, in addition to his roles in the Yukon School Board, Yukon Lions Club, Yukon Roundup Club, the Masonic Lodge of Yukon, the Yukon Library, and many other organizations. And whereas Buddy Al donated the land for the site of the American Legion Post, spearheaded fundraising efforts, oversaw construction of Yukon's American Legion Post 160, which was dedicated on May the 19th, 1949. And whereas it is fitting to bestow upon this historic structure a name that reflects the great enduring legacy of one of our esteemed civic leaders and a distinguished veteran of the Great War. And whereas the American Legion Post 160 building is being renamed after Al Wheatley, as we honor his memory, celebrate his life full of remarkable achievements, along with the highest ideals of public service and selflessness and commitment to the principles of democracy and community spirit. Now I therefore, Brian Pillmore, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May the 21st, 2024, as James Albert Buddy Al Wheatley Day in the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, and encourage all citizens to honor his memory, thank our veterans for all they have given in service to this great country, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Yukon this day.
Hi, I'm Mike Devonich, commander of the American Legion here. We started this process of naming the post when I first became commander last January. It was named Yukon Incorporated, and that just drove us crazy. So, we searched, and I always come back to Mr. Wheatley. His son-in-law is a lawyer just a block from here. From what you heard, the incredible things that he did, it's hands-down what we should name him. So, we'll be doing that. We'll be putting a big sign in front of our post, and thank you for recognizing that.
Great to have your post here, and great to be on Main Street. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Additionally, we have a proclamation for Teacher Appreciation Month. Whereas teachers are the architects of our future, dedicating their lives to guiding and educating the next generation through their wisdom, patience, and passion, shaping the minds and spirits of our youth. Whereas teachers work tirelessly to create a classroom environment that fosters curiosity, critical thinking, a love of learning, adapting their methods to meet the diverse needs and learning styles of students from all backgrounds, including the unique needs of students in special education and alternative education. Whereas the role of a teacher extends beyond the boundaries of a classroom, they act as counselors and confidants, offering support and encouragement, and often providing the extra help students need to succeed. Whereas teachers are central to the educational success of our community, influencing countless lives by providing knowledge and insights that help form the foundation of all future endeavors. And whereas Yukon celebrates the variety of educational approaches within our community, including robust programs at Yukon Public Schools, dynamic learning environments at private schools, the Critical Formation Programs at preschools, early education centers, and Mother's Day Out programs, practical skill development through vocational technical education, and the personalized touch of homeschooling, each contributing uniquely to the fabric of our educational tapestry. Whereas the influence of teachers is eternal, we often remember the profound impact of a special teacher who challenged us to grow and dream bigger. Such educators are treasures within our community, whose contributions change lives forever. Now I therefore, Brian Pillmore, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do proclaim May 2024 as Teacher Appreciation Month. We have a couple to receive these proclamations. You just want to mention your name and introduce yourself.
My name is Beth Quintana, and I teach fourth grade math and science at Independence.
I'm Ashley Palmer, and I am not an educator in the public school system. I am a higher educator, but I am Daryl Andrews' niece, who was a educator at Yukon Public Schools for 39 years.
Ms. Quintana, you won Teacher of the Year this year at Independence Intermediate, and of course, everyone remembers Mr. Andrews and the tremendous legacy that he left. We thank you so much. Additionally, on our own city council, we have three educators, and the work that they do and the care that they have for the community is so great. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll have our visitor section of our agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on our regular agenda, please come to the podium. I will read out the names in the order that they have been submitted here to the city clerk, and please limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to City of Yukon business. Mr. Mike Burris.
Mike Burris, 300 East Platt. Recent events have kind of illustrated to me that things can maybe be taken care of in a matter of weeks instead of years. I've been addressing the Airbnb issue for a couple of years now, and the main thing that I'm here to speak on is that the city actually recommended a half-mile between Airbnbs. They also, their city staff, excuse me, staff also proposed that hosts only be allowed to have one Airbnb in Yukon. Staff has also proposed a two-night minimum stay. I'm hoping that the staff recommendations, which the staff said would help prevent clustering of Airbnbs of several in one area, in other words, circle in us. I'm hoping that maybe something can be done to adopt these three things and make it so that we have more tools. For two years, I addressed issues with an Airbnb that was a party house behind me. I was told for a couple of years that the big deal was is we needed tools to address the Airbnbs in Yukon. Once we got to that point, these are tools that were recommended by Mr. Horton and his staff. So, I'm hoping that the council now will look at these and say, "We want to have a half-mile in between, and we want to prevent the clustering." There was a joint meeting where the council met with the planning commission. I'd encourage you to actually look at that because it kind of tells you what the position of people are. There are people that actually don't support any distance at all, being able to actually put one Airbnb next to another Airbnb. I do not, and if you need their names, I can give you those. Also, I wanted, while I was here, to discuss the issue. As recently, the city manager was terminated, and I had an issue where I was trying to obtain a deal with the police department recently. They had a discussion over their contract. As I tried to talk to people about this contract, nobody really addressed the issue with me, you know, and I think we can pretty much all agree that public safety, there's nothing more relevant to the safety of the citizens in a town than that issue. And actually, there was a councilman who was censured because of the negotiations with the cops and about how that was kind of a big issue. I don't know all the particulars because everybody kind of clammed up. One of the things that I want to address here is, in an effort to get more transparency, which seems to be a big issue right in these days, I think it would help if we actually said, "Hey, here's what's going on. Here's what we think. Although I support going by what the contract says, if the contract says that you're an at-will employee and you can be terminated without cause, that's okay," but it kind of upsets some people. It doesn't upset me because I worked under contracts before. I'm comfortable with you live with it and you die with it. But I think that's what a lot of people are doing, is they're looking for an explanation. What's the story? What's going on? And I think if you could work toward maybe doing that, maybe there'd be some level of comfort with what you're doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burris. Amber and Seth, I believe it's Marcus, I believe.
Amber Marcus, 15401 West Frisco Drive. We are here to present to you our plans to build our future home. We have previously tried talking to a few members, and we have been told that we are going to be denied. Our goal is to establish family roots in this community, which is just a half-mile within the city limits off Wilshire and Cimarron Road. Seth and I both have served in the United States Marine Corps, and we plan to utilize our veterans' benefits to build our home. We have been generously offered by his parents, Carol and David Marcus, a piece of their land in order to stay in a good family area. We've been there already for two years with them, and they are getting older, so it is really nice to be able to be there with them and make sure that things are getting taken care of, that they aren't be able to do. In your possession, you have a comprehensive package containing all the necessary details for proceeding with the construction of our family home, which includes the driveway to the private road of the home being built, a land survey detailing the lot split and driveway location, as well as a topography of the property lines and area view of the proposed construction area. In addition, we also provide statements that is signed by our neighbors. Now, some were not home. I'm assuming probably because it's summertime, they're on vacation. But we do have our neighbor that is newly right next to us on the west side. He does not have any, basically, they don't have a disapproval of this. They agree, they don't mind. It's a very nice, quiet area. We love the area. It's beautiful. His parents have been there for over 20 years, and we just want to be able to put our roots down there and be able to stay within family, like just family area. They do have family that live out of state, so they do have already plans of putting the rest of the land in the name to stay in with the family. And if there is any kind of regards of any of like potential sale, we have already made arrangements for it to remain in the family. We just want to make sure that this area just stays in a history of the Markuses to where it just thrives. We also have cattle that we want to be able to take care of, and again, I want to reiterate, his parents are getting old, so we just want to make sure that we want to be there to help attend to anything and not have to relocate and have to take time to be able to come and get help with anything that they need. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. I just thank you for your time.
Thanks so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Nick Gerba, 932 Majestic Street. I've just got a question for you, Mr. Pillmore. It has to do with a public statement, and let me quote this. Every decision aligns with the community's best interest, and I'd just like you to clarify what that means, that how does an abrupt and unjustified firing of a highly effective 27-year tenure city manager align with the community's best interest? Can you answer that?
Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to answer during this time. I can answer in a regular agendted item, Mr. Gerba.
Also, just got to put it on agenda, then you can answer the question.
Yeah, we can put it on the agenda to discuss at a later time.
Okay, I think that'd be great. And I just want to kind of reiterate another point that when you sit in that seat, who do you work for?
I work for the City of Yukon.
The city. Does that mean these people here?
Absolutely. I represent the entire city.
I just wanted to make sure, because it just seemed like up until this point, you know, within seven hours of you sitting in that seat, that these people put you in that seat, you violated their trust. Do you think you owe them an explanation or an apology for that breach of trust?
Yeah, like I said, I'm not able to respond directly to the inquiry in this unagended item. I'm happy to discuss at a later time or on an agendted item.
We'll get it on the agenda then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicer?
Just confirm, mine are related to agendted items, so I can wait if we're allowed discussion at that point.
You're allowed discussion on any agenda item.
Then I'll just hold off till then.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Trey Bishop, 12541 West Reno Avenue. Give me one second to grab some documents. Three months ago, I came in and described to you all a problem that I was having, receiving records from the Yukon Police Department. Two of you guys weren't yet on council, but I believe you heard what I had to say. I repeated my request to Yukon Police Department, and as I told you, if I didn't get satisfaction, I would be back, and I'll return again and again. This is what I submitted, which I've, all of you have seen this because I sent it to you, but I'm going to repeat this for the audience. This is an official request for records pursuant to the Open Records Act. Please provide the following records. On January 15th, 2024, Officer Bradford responded to a 911 call for domestic dispute at 4013 Caliope Court in Yukon, Oklahoma. Please provide audio for this 911 call, body cam footage from all responding officers, as well as the incident report or any supplemental reports by officers responding to the call, and the probable cause affidavits presented to the DA for charges. The Open Records Act provides for the redaction of identifying information in records where there is allegation of domestic dispute, I'm sorry, domestic abuse. As both parties in this case refuse to make such allegations against the other, there is no legal reason to redact these records. Yukon and Canadian County residents deserve transparency, and they will receive it one way or another. I believe you've all received Chief Corn's response to me. The request for body cam footage, probable cause, 911 for the domestic dispute alleged to have occurred at 4013 Caliope Court in Yukon, Oklahoma. Research was performed, and this is what guides us. And he essentially cites the portion of the Open Records Act that I previously mentioned, which is that portions relating to domestic abuse allegations can be redacted. However, John has told me, and in his letter, he says, "There is no probable cause affidavit as no party in the incident was arrested." He's told me that neither party will allege domestic abuse against the other. There is no domestic abuse allegation. So, the record, we should, all of the public should be able to see what this is. He says in here, "911 calls are not open record, but may be released case to case." This is wrong, but he says, "It would appear there is no public interest in this case, only a private citizen wanting to publicize a victim's private life for personal gain." I have nothing personal to gain looking into this. I am only looking into this because it is public interest, and it won't be, wherever Chief Corn is, it won't be Chief Corn who decides what is public interest. If it goes that far, it's going to be a district judge who's going to decide what's in public interest, and it's been 120 days since the incident, so I can bring that forward to the court anyway. I'm asking you guys to be transparent. Everything that you do should be transparent. We should not have law enforcement officers covering up for other law enforcement officers in our town. That's public interest. That's a matter of public interest. So, I'm going to be back again and again and again until the people of the City of Yukon can see what their police officers are doing and who they're covering up for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, 2024, and the amendment to sign location lease between Yukon Municipal Authority Lessor and Lamar Companies Lessie located at Highway 66, 100-foot W0 Frisco Road, Canadian County, Oklahoma, the amount of $500 annually to be paid by the Lessie. Do I hear a motion? Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. We'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item similarly is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, 2024, the minutes of the special meeting of May 14th, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $857,953.59, the renewal agreement with Ice Challenge Enterprises LLC for a temporary outdoor ice rink at Chisholm Trail Park for Christmas in the park, renewal of the agreement between City of Yukon and Crawford Associates, PC, for the preparation of annual financial statements and general accounting and advisory assistance through June 30th, 2025, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal, and the appointment of Brian Pillmore to the Yukon Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors as the city's representative. Do I hear a motion? Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any reports of boards, commissions, or city officials?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have some follow-up on some projects we found out today. The Carissa Grant, this is the one that is the overlay for the Garth Brooks from basically 66 Main Street to Vanuatu. The state did receive a low bid from Atlas Paving for $514,428, but the grant was $921,000, so we're going to work with the state and maybe see if we can adjust the thickness of the asphalt because we don't want to lose any of this money. So, we're working on that, and we'll be discussing that with ODOT so we can try to get that funding back where it needs to be so we don't lose any money. Holly, Gary Great, you know, we've been talking about that needing to be fixed. You know, we approved it a while back. It's on Holly, between Montreal and Holly Court. The contractor will start May 27th, getting ready, and actually, they'll block the road on the 28th and actually start work on it. It'd probably be about mid-June is what we're thinking, barring any bad weather, you know, rain events that might cause a problem. Wagner Road is progressing. The contractor's waiting for the subgrade to dry out. We have half of the road, the north half, is basically being stripped, and they're just waiting for it so they can get started stabilization. So, they're working on that. That timeline for completion is about July 1st, the same thing about weather. The Freedom Trail Park Splash Pad and Playground, we're working very closely with them, and Parks and Rec staff, we have somebody actually with them every day checking to make sure that they repair the damaged panels and the drainage issues we have. So, we're still looking on that and making sure that we finish that in the time for the grant. We have heard from Stephanie Bice's office about the $560,000 that we applied for the grant. We're going to start, we have to do a workshop, so we'll start that workshop, and there is actually a program training and administration of the grant. So, we're working on that, trying to make sure that we get that and it's put to use at the wastewater treatment plant. So, staff will be reviewing those and doing what we need to do for the training so we can make sure we get that project going. And that's all I have tonight on those projects.
Thank you. Any council members have any comments on those items? Outstanding work. At this time, we'll consider a motion. Do we have a Zoom for this one, or is that, yes? Okay. At this time, we'll consider a motion to accept the utility rate study from Garver Riper Water Analytics. Let's take the motion, and then we'll begin.
We also have it represented from Garver.
Oh, here, very good. Thank you, Mike. Would you mind approaching the podium? Do I hear a motion to accept this report, and then we'll get the discussion going? Still moved?
Second.
Very good. And we have a Zoom coming up now, I think? And we have a Zoom coming up now, I think? I think for the, I'll kick things off, for the citizens, this is quite possibly one of the most important and impactful things that will affect them on a monthly basis because it will affect their water, wastewater and billing. And maybe you can clarify, you know, the scope of the work that you all did in this, in this study?
Yep, and Ryan, if I misspeak, just correct me. So, I'm Michael Lynn with Garver. I worked with, we worked with Ryan Smith with Riper Analytical to do a rate study for the city of Yukon. The general scope, we took, we looked at capital planning for the city's next five years, where the money is coming from and all of that, and kind of balanced the checkbook pretty much to make sure that, based on their water, wastewater, and trash rates with the projected projects and inflation costs and all that, we, you guys will be able to balance your checkbook pretty much at a pretty high level. I don't know if Ryan.
Hey, Mike, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. My name is Ryan Smith. I'm with Riper Water Analytics. We are a financial consulting firm that specializes in municipal enterprise funds, basically water and sewer sanitation enterprise funds. Really, what we did as part of the rate study was to develop a financial forecast to decide what were, what's our plan of action and our goals over the next five years. And for most utilities, one of the biggest drivers for the need for changes in utility rates and is capital planning, and that's really where we focused, as you know, and where you're, right now, you're in the process of moving forward with your wastewater treatment plan upgrade project. You've done really well with securing grant monies that totals, I believe it's about approximately five million dollars in grant monies that you've secured for that project. And what we did was come in to help develop the plan of how else do we fund the remaining balance of that project along with our other identified capital improvements over the coming years. One of the other items that we did was we were asked to look at and reevaluate your existing rate structure. Is it equitable, and is it recovering the cost of providing services to each individual customer, both from a water and wastewater standpoint, and then also from a residential and commercial standpoint? What we ended up finding is that your existing rate structure, you really kind of have three components. You have your base charge, your OKC subsidy, which are both flat rate charged, and then you have a volumetric tiered structure. When we looked at our actual cost and we compared those to our revenue recovery mechanisms, our, our rates, we identified that there is a need to recalculate rates, which we have done first to remove the OKC subsidy and instead recover the cost of purchased water, which you all do purchase, the vast majority of your water from the city of Oklahoma City. And what we did is we, we came up with a structure that removed that OKC subsidy and spread that cost over all of the customers that benefit from the service. I, really, it was what ended up happening when we did this, was it moved cost from the residential customer class to commercial because we did notice some, I won't call it inequity, but maybe just a delta compared to the cost of service and the revenue recovery mechanisms. Then additionally, we did the same exact analysis for sanitation as well, developing our financial forecast for the next five years, and then we evaluated the rate structure mechanisms. And when we did that, we ended up identifying, you know, that there was some potential inequities, and effectively, what we've come up with is a plan that meets our need from a capital funding standpoint, provides the city with a revenue stream that can be reinvested into the system. And really, when we talk about enterprise funds, you know, enterprise funds are closed systems, so any money that is generated in the utility really generally stays in and benefits the utility. And for water and wastewater and for sanitation, that's, you know, capital reinvestment in our infrastructure, and then also vehicle and cart purchases on sanitation side. The analysis was presented in detail when a month, was it a month ago now, almost a month ago? And we've delivered our report, and so obviously, I, I think what our recommendation to the city is, is to adopt the recommendations of the study, which recognized those rate structure changes. It does increase rates, and then going forward, we made a recommendation to implement a CPI rate adjustment, so to slowly bring up rates over time instead of doing, you know, single one-time near-term rate adjustments. And then to, also to recommend that the city seek to secure a SRF loan to fund the remaining balance of the wastewater treatment implant project, and those loans are very, very favorable. Right now, I believe the interest rates are, you know, sub-two percent. And then the other benefit of securing through the SRF program versus issuing bonds is that the SRF program defers principal and interest repayment until six months after the project has been completed. So that also provides a benefit because really, we're going to tie the repayment of that asset to, you know, when it's being installed, and then really, the customers, they're going to benefit from the use of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any council persons?
I have a question, so just to clarify for those of you listening, that we are removing the Oklahoma City twenty dollars, which is going to benefit the people who use less water. So that's going to be wonderful because you were paying almost as much in water as you were the Oklahoma City water. And so that's going to be wonderful, but did we remove the summer rates too?
Oh, yes, ma'am. You are right. We did look at the winter and, the winter/summer wastewater rates, and what we identified was that the, the implementation of the wastewater winter rates, which has a little bit higher differential on the top wastewater tiers, was only producing, you know, less than one percent of your total rate revenues. And so we did say, hey, there's definitely some efficiencies here to potentially go away from these wastewater rates, both from an administrative standpoint and kind of recognizing, you know, whether the service is being provided and not. And so we did make a recommendation to remove the winter rates as well.
Okay, well, now, you removed the summer rates. The summer rates, what that did was, because a lot of times we're watering or filling swimming pools, we didn't pay as much sanitation because we're not using as much sanitation. In the wintertime, all it is is basically water usage and sanitation. And so summer rates gave those people a break with the fact that, you know, just because I use this much water doesn't mean I have that much sanitation, it means I'm watering or I'm filling up my swimming pool. So we're not getting a summer break with this new study.
Correct. And for the majority of your customers, I think eighty-five percent of your customers, residential, single-family, use about seven, what is it, two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a day or seventy-five-hundred gallons a month or less. So, really, when we talked about who was really kind of benefiting from having that rate structure change, typically it was falling to the large-use customers, which are generally commercial or high-use residential.
Right. We decided my family was either extremely dirty or extremely clean because I have very high water rates.
I got my water bill at the dogwash the other day, and it was cheaper than your house.
You know, I, I'm telling you, I don't know what we're doing over there. And we're just now filling our swimming pool up, so I can't wait till next month.
Get a leak.
I know.
I really appreciated the report. I thought it was very thorough, quite lengthy. It is attached to the agenda materials and has quite a few addendums, which I'm thankful for. The, in particular, the thing that I thought was nice was kind of going through there and looking at the rates at different volume tiers. And for me, I just looked up my last water bill, looked at how much I'd used, and then just in five or ten minutes, kind of found the right sections of the report and said, okay, this is what my bill's going to be. I think, in my case, I'm paying six dollars more, from my rough math. But I think especially folks who have smaller homes, you know, two-bedroom, maybe a single person, whatever, I think they're, they're not going to, they're going to get away from that, like, fixed charge that was driving their, you know, I think some people's minimum water bills were like fifty-six dollars or something, and instead, those people will be in the twenties or thirties instead of in the fifties, and people that are using water are going to pay for it. But I also appreciate the market-based approach, where you listed the other cities that are in that report, and it shows that, that Yukon is, it's not the highest, it's not the lowest, you know, it's, it's right in the market.
And then, one thing to point out too, when, when you guys looked at that report, whenever we compared the like cities around us, that was before any rate increases in those cities, so when you see that proposed one, if the other cities increase, you guys will still fall in the middle.
And as of right now, aren't we set up with our, are we set up with codes that differentiate the difference between residential and commercial as well? Or is there, are we setting a difference between commercial and residential?
Mr. Councilman, when, when this is basically accepted, this doesn't start that rate, we will have to actually sit down and come up with ordinances that would address that. The timing of that will have to be a couple months off from when we adopt it because of the sheer number of accounts we have to go in and touch and adjust to make those adjustments. So.
I think there's a difference in residential and commercial rates for sanitation? But, and I'm trying to think on water and sewer, is it commercial versus residential, or is it just volumetric?
Water, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, water, we set the same because each account, we set a level of service based on our reserve capacity with Oklahoma City, and then with the wastewater rates, we set a differential on the volumetric charge, recognizing that the strength that is received in the wastewater from those customers typically is higher, and so we did kind of recognize that differential in the wastewater rates.
And that's a little bit outside of the scope, or I, I think it's touched on in the report, but, Mr. City Manager, could you fill us in on the impact fees and how that might impact our going-forward approach?
The impact fees, as we go forward, as you know, this is based on water meter sizes. I think we'll just need to look at it and see how it impacts this as we go forward. It goes off water meter sizes. So, if I remember right, let me get over here to it, I actually was at it just a second ago, I think five-eighths meter was like six hundred dollars, and it goes from there, but it's based on the size of the meter.
Will we also have impact fees in the case where we're expanding our distribution system?
Well, uh...
Is that outside of the scope of this?
This would be outside of the scope. We have a drainage basin fee or basin fee that is above and beyond this, where we have done our improvements to the Frisco area that we will recoup any expenses for those that attach onto it that's not in the TIF area.
That makes sense.
And we'll have a, a study session for that, but this is based on water meter sizes is how that impact is down here.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Really appreciate the thorough approach. Seeing no other discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
I'm not voting on my personal agenda, but what's best for the city, yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to accept the city manager job description and authorizing the human resources director to advertise the city manager job. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just one second, press. And, oh, you heard the second, good. Now we'll have a time of discussion. Go ahead, press.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening. I just had a quick question.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Preston Spicer. Preston Spicer, thirteen-five-hundred West Wolfshire. Quick question regarding item number four. The agenda item implies that changes were made to the job description. I was curious if somebody could comment on what those changes were, if any, I don't know. I think I heard that the director of HR may have been here, I didn't know if she or someone maybe will comment on those, if there were any.
We didn't use the prior job description at all in building that one up. We looked to the latest job descriptions for city managers, and the HR director helped us to build that in a compliant fashion.
Okay.
You know, to make sure that we covered the minimum qualifications, the critical aspects of the job. It's attached in the agenda materials, and if there's any particular qualifications or requirements, we'd be happy to discuss them, or also, our HR director will, you know, if this passes, will be posting the job, and she, she'll be available.
Definitely, definitely. Just curious, when was the, when was the last one done, I guess?
Cindy, is it, was it twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? Or was it before then?
It was, it was when, the last was probably updated probably nineteen.
Okay, that's what I see, I'm just curious.
Yeah, late, probably late twenty nineteen.
Okay, cool, thank you. That's all I have for that one.
I wasn't privy to this meeting on the changes. Cindy, can you just tell us if there, what, any big changes? Because I wasn't in on this meeting. Who was?
There wasn't any big changes, it was just updated. It was very out of date.
So it was you and?
I got, I got the copy of it after Mr. Pillmore.
So he made the job description, and then you just approved it?
Right. That is correct. And it was basically updated because it was very out of date.
Thank you.
When, as far as the, when you're talking about a, an, an HR function like that, shouldn't the city manager be involved in that? Was this was a, was there any way this was bypassing the city manager? Because you would assume, since the city manager is in charge of personnel, that the city manager would have to be involved with rewriting this. But, so you rewrote it and then gave it to her?
No, we...
The city manager was not involved?
Mr. Gerba, we, first of all, the last six days, we did not have a city manager in place. We had an assistant city manager. Secondly, we met collaboratively and worked with, I worked with the city manager and the HR director to make sure that we could pull together a job description to review. The job description has not been finalized, that's actually what we're discussing right now, any potential changes or comments from the public or from city council members regarding tweaks or changes that we ought to make. You know, we're open to those substantive, substantive amendments to the job description.
But by charter, I don't understand how the mayor can, can work on something like that with a city employee without the city manager being involved.
Mitch was in, I mean, our day-in, day-out, our assistant city manager was involved in this.
She never said anything about that. After he gave you that?
Yes, we was involved to come up with a job description and update it. We did work on that. But actually, that employee will work for the city council directly, so. And HR is going to be the one that's going to advertise the position, so it has to go out. It won't be the council advertising it, but the resumes will come back to the council. It won't come back to city staff.
Thanks for clarifying.
One more thing on that. If and when it gets posted and somebody, y'all select somebody, does that go before the public for review as well? I assume it would. And how does that work? Is it simply the person that y'all pick, or is there like a finalized list of candidates that would be revealed to the public in order for them to review as well?
The, the process that the council will utilize will be to advertise a job posting, receive candidates, conduct proper pre-screening interviews, validate that they're qualified for the minimum job requirements, and then conduct interviews of those as a council, and, and then through the proper procedures, make it known to the public that we've made a selection. So the, the council as a whole, I would encourage you to connect with your council person and your, and all the council persons, quite frankly, to express what you believe to be the most critical characteristics of a city manager that would serve the citizens as best as they can.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Any other discussion on the job description? Any amendments that any council persons would like to make to that job description?
Is the job description something we can show to the public?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is the job description something we can show to the public? Is the job description something we can show to the public? It seems like there's quite a bit of concern.
Absolutely. It's in the agenda packet.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay. Seeing no other discussion or amendments, we have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. Mr. Clerk, can you call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the consideration of declaring the accessory structure at one thousand Queensborough Place, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two fifteen of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue recovery costs for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. Do we have any speakers? Seeing no speakers for this public hearing, we'll close the public hearing at this time. This time, we'll consider a motion to declare the accessory structure at one thousand Queensborough Place, Yukon, Oklahoma, in violation of chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash two of the Code of the City of Yukon, declaring it a public nuisance of such nature as to constitute grave and immediate danger to the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare, directing the city staff to demolish the structure and to clear the property as quickly as possible in accordance with chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four dash three of the Code of the City of Yukon, directing the city clerk to pursue the recovery costs for such work if done by the city, directing the city treasurer to place any such revenues collected into the specific fund for which, which said revenues were originally appropriated, and further directing the filing of a notice in the county clerk's office. Do I hear a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mitch, can you tell us a little bit on this of, is this the ever shrinking shed?
This is the shed that's in question that's on the corner of their one thousand Queensborough. It's on the corner of Queensborough and Vandement. You know, we've been directed and actually have two code enforcement officers now who are very aggressive on cleaning up the areas that would have issues such as, you know, rats, mice, things like that. So this is one of them. You'll have others that will come along. We're trying to make sure that we don't have more than one on a council agenda. So we don't have like we had in the past where somebody didn't do anything. We was hoping they would, they didn't. So you will see more of these coming as well. They're in the process. So, but yes, we want to remove that. It does not look well and it does, it is an issue.
Can you tell us the mechanics of the removal of this?
Well, basically after tonight, they will get another notice, giving them a notice that the council has chosen to take action and that action is the removal of the structure and will give them a date and time that we will enter the property and take that action if they do not remove the structure on their, on accord. And any charges that we'd have for that for employees going on there, as well as disposal costs will be charged back to that property and filed on that deed if he chooses not to pay for it or they choose not to pay for it.
How long do you usually give somebody to clean this up?
This one, as you look in there, it goes back, it actually goes back to twenty twenty-three, but it's actually farther than that. There was a time before COVID that we had a couple of, you know, code enforcement officers and had to downsize and now we're back at full force, you know. So we're getting those that have fallen through the crack because the one code enforcement officer just could not keep up with all of the issues that we have. So.
Typically though, how long do we give somebody?
They get a long time. We give up to probably ninety days or more by the time we go through the process because the whole idea is to them to clean it up. Now, there is some, once we've abated it, we'll go back in and that, and bait it throughout that year. But there's a term or a time that if it, if they don't abate it, that we have to renotice. So every year, basically, we have to go to renotice on the property if we have to bait it every year.
Thank you.
So there's a process. So they get enough time and enough courtesy to try to do something.
Are we using our employees to remediate this or abate this?
We use the Public Works employees to remediate it. If there's an issue that we need a police officer to stand by, a police officer does show up. We've had a couple of them that we've actually had to do that. There has been an arrest at one of the locations. But yes, anything that we think is going to be interesting, this might be one we want a police officer to stand by.
I think that's really important, really something that we care about, that our employees are really safe as they do these things. While it's great to clean up the neighborhood, we don't want to do so at the expense of our employees' health and safety.
No, we make sure that they're well protected. We've got a real good working relationship with the police department. The majors are very reactive to anything we need and basically they so tell us if we have an issue, call nine one one and there'll be somebody there because they know what's going on.
Very good.
So they're very good to work with.
If you, do you think if we give this thirty days, that we would see a change in this or?
No, no. No, because the time that the notices has been gone for a long time. We've tried to give them that time.
Well, the response that we've been getting from him.
The letters that are in here, if you'll notice, is the kind of letters that we are getting responses on. He is a sovereign nation, sovereign, what, how they say it, sovereign nation, we the people, you know?
Sovereignty.
Sovereignty, yeah.
It's not going to change.
No.
No.
We, we do have and have dealt with a couple of those and they're very interesting to deal with. So, but we try to treat them with courtesy and try to let them know that this is what we have to do if we're going to live within the city limits of Yukon.
It's, it's turned into kind of a landmark. We'll have to learn how to give new directions.
Yes.
I was going to say the same thing. It's been a joke for all these years with my family that it's the ever shrinking shed.
Yes. Well, like I said, we're taking a more proactive approach. As you've seen, we've cleared some lots and we're continuing to work on. There is some structures that are in bad shape. So our goal is to keep on going as the council directs us to.
Very good. I believe we, we've had the motion and the second. Any other discussion on this item? Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve the purchase of three communication consoles for nine eleven, nine one one dispatch in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred five dollars and seventy-four cents to be purchased from the nine one one account through HGAC by contract number EC zero seven dash two three nine dash one dash one, as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, you want to tell us a little bit about this?
These are actually the consoles to replace our original items that we bought when we moved into the building in two thousand and eight. So they've held up quite well. The manufacturer is the same manufacturer that we bought from in two thousand and eight. These are just a little bit more updated. The current ones we, they broke. Two of them have broken. So we're going to get rid of them, replace these integrated connections for all of the components, the software. We'll limit the number of wires, integrated heaters, integrated fans, steel hydraulic capability to raise and lower. So it'll be a whole makeover for the communication center.
They do a standing desk on that as well, Chief?
That's the hydraulic portion, the center, the monitors, everything will raise so the communications officer could stand if they feel fatigue for sitting too long. They don't have to sit the entire time and they can control the height of that based on their own body structure.
It looks pretty nice.
Yeah, they're going to be super nice. It'll, it would kind of like going from small compact to a large Cadillac.
Nice. Very good. Thanks, Chief. Any other discussion on this item? Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
All right. The next item is a discussion item only for the resumption of Merchant McIntyre Services in Mr. Beal's absence. Mr. City Manager, could you provide us with some background or is there another department director that could do so on this?
No, this is one I can provide a little bit of information. Basically, this is a group that we obtained their services to try to help us obtain federal funds because we're having problems within the metro area getting funding because of the large cities and project-ready projects. That's one of the things that you score high on if you've got plans on the shelf. We actually worked with them for submitting for the Northwest Tenth and Cornwall Air Intersection over two million dollars. They have and they did talk about, I think Stephanie Bice did when we was at the Marriage Prayer Breakfast, that at least it's being discussed. It's possibly in the fiscal year twenty-five earmark request. We're trying to find out where that's at so we can make sure, you know, where it's at if we are going to be funded because there's a lot of times it gets in that and doesn't get funded. So letters have been sent to Senator Moll and staff and Representative Bice's staff and we're trying to figure out where we're at on that. They have advised us and let us know that they can help us with surface transportation, water and wastewater infrastructure, public safety and economic and community development. There is a lot of these grants because of our higher income. It kind of kicks us out. But hopefully, you know, we got the wastewater treatment plant. We got some money from the federal government that Stephanie Bice is very involved in that we're getting. So hopefully we can get some more of their funding. So the thought was, you know, do we continue on? We're trying to find out for sure where we're at on this submittal. You know, the idea is if the submittal is actually going to be funded, that the money we would pay them would be well spent, that we could look at other opportunities. We just have to have our matching money. Because some of them are eighty, twenty, ninety, ten, depends on what we apply for. Some of them are fifty, fifty. So, but any money towards those intersections and Garth Brooks, it would be much appreciated.
Sounds like the working relationship's been very good so far in the first three months of the pilot.
Yes.
This is approximately eight thousand dollars a month.
That's correct.
Of spend and these, this group is representing us in areas that would be fairly expensive for us to travel to.
Yes.
To discuss with those stakeholders.
Yes. We'd, we'd have to change some staff around a little bit where we're more reactive. There was a time that getting the information together, by the time we got the engineering stuff together and getting all up together. But we have figured out how to do that if you so choose to go ahead and fund that.
Any thoughts of other city council members? Should we include this in the budget proposal for next council meeting?
I think if city staff feels it's been beneficial and we can see results out of it, I don't see a problem with doing that.
Well, hopefully we'll have an answer, answer for you for that earmark that we're talking about for the Cornwall Northwest Tenth. And that way it may give us a better comfort level. But they have been very nice and very easy to work with and they're very on top of it.
I'm always in favor of hiring experts that do something all day long and they give me, give you a little bit of your, of their time. Any other discussion on this discussion item? Okay, seeing no discussion, we'll close out that discussion item. At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero six, a resolution to consolidate the location of all board and commission meetings within the council chambers of Yukon, Oklahoma to mandate broadcasting these over the internet. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I would like, I've heard some feedback from the, both the leaders of the boards and commissions, as well as the city leadership that is familiar with the spaces and where we like to have these meetings. And I would like to add another motion here to postpone this item until we can gather the feedback from both the professionals at our city as well as the leaders of the different, the chairman, chairpersons of the boards, commissions, and authorities. An example of this is like the Parks Board, they would like to hold some working sessions out and about at the park, which I think is an excellent idea. So I'd like to, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to.
It's, it's Mr. Wooten's motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wooten. May we amend your motion?
We may amend the motion to what?
May I have the floor?
You may.
I, I make an amendment to your motion and the amendment being to replace your motion in whole to postpone this item till the next regularly scheduled city council meeting for further review and discussion with department leaders as well as the leaders of boards, commissions, and authorities of the city. Do I hear a?
One second.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion. Mr. Clerk, could you call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve ordinance fourteen fifty, an ordinance establishing a board of freeholders for the purpose of amending the city charter of Yukon, Oklahoma, providing for the composition, appointment, and duties of the board, deleting and repealing ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask where you came up with the term freeholders?
Mr. City Attorney, could you fill us in on what a freeholder is?
Well, that's, that term, that's, it's a term of art. It's found in the charter itself. Freeholder means a citizen within your community.
What it really dates back to is the American Revolution when it was, it's a very sexist and racist thing. I looked it up today. The state of New Jersey is the last group to have a group called freeholders because it talks about a white male landowner. And so they decided that it was racist enough that they repealed that, calling it that back in twenty twenty-one. And so it's a term that's no longer used. And that's where I just, when people hear freeholders and you know what it really means, is a white male landowner. Kind of goes with what that board is. They're all white males, I believe. But I just, I have a problem with calling it that.
I think it's a great point. Councilperson Selby, would it be appropriate that as the first item that this board of whatever we want to call them makes a change to our city charter, not only to amend the language that is offensive here, but also to amend the gendered language? Our city charter currently has many gendered language statements that just say.
We can't change that. That goes before the vote of the people.
Well, all of these items will go before the vote of the people. That's what this board of.
This board that you would be appointing would have the opportunity to make recommendations to change the language in section sixty that addresses the term freeholders.
Without a vote of the people?
No, they would make a recommendation and then that would have to go to a vote of the people.
With the council in between.
Why not just call it something else?
I think we can definitely make the, you know.
I just think it's a bad term.
I absolutely agree.
Don't disagree. It's just the way, it's just the way the charter reads today.
Any other council discussion? One second, President.
Do, do you have a suggestion on what to call it?
You know, maybe we call it the Charter Committee.
I think that's a great idea.
Charter Review. I mean, that's very generic.
Mr. Clerk said that there are communities that use a charter review committee. Would Ms., Mr. Spicer, please.
If y'all have anything else, you're welcome to finish. I just.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Couple things, just really a few questions. There's been a little bit of talk about transparency tonight. On item ten, which is the ordinance fourteen fifty that we're discussing, section two, I was just wondering if each of you wouldn't mind elaborating a little bit on the people that you nominated for this role. And obviously, there's qualifications listed here mainly just that the person resides in Yukon. But was curious if you can provide any background to why they would be a good fit for this board and the decisions that the board has to make. Ms. Selby?
I would gladly tell you. Mine is Ken Smith. Ken Smith is a former city councilman and so he knows a lot about our charter. He also knows our form of government. He also knows the history of Yukon. And so I felt like he would be a strong voice in keeping with the history and also knowing the legalities. He's also a business owner. He lives in my ward, ward two. That's why he was chosen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Selby. Mr. Shriver?
Chris Townsend, he's also ward four. He's a business owner, very smart, intelligent. He's been here, he and his whole family has deep roots here in town. He's lived in several different wards. Him and his family's been here for a very long time. I think he'll be a good, good voice for, and he's a good listener. So I think he'll listen to the, if y'all show up to the boards, meetings, the guy's going to listen. So that's why I put him in place.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Wooten? Mr. Wooten?
My gentleman, Mr. Ellis. He's been a member of this city for, how many years? Two hundred years? I'm saying year old. He's very active within the, the school. He has children in the school district. He's very involved in the, in the city and a businessman. I thought he'd be a great person to represent.
Mr. Pillmore?
Mr. Shelton was selected due to his deep history in the city, knowledge of the city council, working on city council and understanding of the charter. And he's also been involved in, in business and with the school district with his family for a very long time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zimmerman?
I picked Mr. Roper because he's, follows government very well, knows a lot of people here in the city. He's very citizen-oriented and likes the, believes power resides within the citizenry, so I thought he would fit in very well there since it's a, a move that the citizens have to make.
Awesome. Thank you very much for, for elaborating on that. Couple other questions. I would assume that with kind of, as quickly as we're trying to convene this board, and I'll cover that a little bit further in a second, I was curious if each of you, if you have any, wouldn't mind commenting on any of the ideas. We've already talked about a couple here tonight, but any of the ideas you have for amendments to the charter that you could kind of elaborate on? Because like I said, I think it, there's some stuff that probably was pre-existing that you had ideas on, so I'd be curious.
I, I'd add too, that I've heard on the campaign trail, knocking around eighteen-hundred doors of my citizens. First one is that the current form of selecting our mayor via the appointment or the vote of the, the fellow city council members. I think that it might work in a small town, but we're a mid-sized city in Oklahoma, so one of the ideas that I would ask this board to consider and take up and think about is one that I've heard from the citizens, that the citizens would like to vote on their mayor. I don't know, the mechanics of that are-
Sure.
-complicated. That's why we have a great board with smart people. Second item is when there's a council vacancy, if, if I was to get hit by a bus tomorrow, there'd be a council vacancy. Maybe some people would cheer, I don't know. But-
God forbid.
But I think the question would be, how does that get replaced? And right now, it's by the fellow city councilmen, right? That they appoint someone from the community in that ward to take my spot. Obviously, if there's a short time left in a term, you know, there's three, six months, maybe it doesn't make sense to call a special election. But let's say, I mean, I was just seated. Let's say that something happens and, and I can't fulfill my term. I think the citizens in my ward would like to have someone represent them that they've elected, and so I think it's prudent to think about a special election for vac-, council vacancies. Those are just two that I heard out on the campaign trail. We, as a city council, cannot change the charter. Thank goodness, right? It's a good city charter. It's established a long time ago, served us well. As the city grows and changes, and as the citizens need something different, that's why this board will exist. And might be, I'm sure our other city council persons can chime in on some potential changes that they're thinking about and that they might-
Mayor, I, I hate to interrupt you, but-
Go ahead.
Your agenda item is very narrowly drawn just to establish the, to approve the ordinance which establishes this board of citizens to be on there. There's nothing given to the public that you'll be discussing items that would be submitted for a charter change.
Thank you.
So, I, I think we need to narrow our discussion in order to comport with the Open Meetings Act.
Would a discussion on the timeline, Roger, would that conform here as well?
Because that's one of my next, actually, one of my next questions.
Go ahead, Preston.
Would be, when, when would this board convene? Do we know the day and time or when it would start?
Certainly can discuss that.
Is that appropriate?
Getting into the details of, of what would be discussed is not on the agenda.
I appreciate that. Kind of working backwards, this needs to go to a vote of the people. When you hold special elections that are off-cycle, number one, the turnout is very low. Number two, if there's not already an election convened on or about that date, it, it requires some cost for the city. So, in order to, one, have maximum turnout so that the citizens can speak and vote in, en masse, and two, to reduce the cost to the city of calling, when you call a special election in an off-cycle time, you have to pay the election workers to open the precincts. And so, in order to avoid that, you know, it could be prudent to align this with a November election. You might say, well, November's a long time away. The county election board kind of finalizes their ballots around the middle, you know, second, third week of August. So, you kind of working backwards from that. Obviously, our city attorney and city council have to review this. The Can-, Canadian County Election Board would need to review the language for the proposition. So, you kind of go, you kind of keep working back, and, you know, it feels like, well, why are we doing this right away? It's prudent to, to avoid taking on cost and to, I think the November election would be a wonderful time for the citizens to speak on what they want and, if they want any, you know-
Sure.
-changes their charter.
Sure. Kind of a follow-up question to that, and can I go ahead and kind of comment on Ten A since it's also part of Ten at this time? I don't know if, since the emergency proclamation's technically in- Yeah, it's, would be part of the ordinance. Okay, I just want to make sure, following precedent. So, you, you kind of touched on it there. So, this is, there's an emergency clause at the end of this, and as defined in, I believe it's Section Seventeen of the charter, an emergency ordinance is an ordinance which, in the judgment of the council, is necessary for the immediate preservation of peace, health and/or safety. And so, I guess my question is, I know what your answer is probably going to be because you kind of just elaborated on it. However, based on that definition of emergency, I don't know that this necessarily constitutes as an emergency because it doesn't necessarily fall into the purview of immediate preservation of peace, health or safety for the community. Is there, can somebody please comment on that?
Well, one of the issues, it, it's not an emergency. The state statute, the wording they used is an emergency. Really what goes on when we print it in the paper, if you do not attach the emergency, you have to print the whole ordinance in its total in the paper.
Okay.
The emergency's only printing the title in the paper. And that's all about cost because of so many ordinances that we do, we'd be spending a lot of money.
I guess then my question would be, if you continue to use the word emergency, it loses value, so-
Yeah.
-everything can't be an emergency, and, I mean, that-
Yeah.
That's kind of concerning that we're calling everything emergency just to save money on what we're printing in the newspaper, when there could be very real emergencies down the road that-
Yeah.
-need to be called an emergency. So, I just, I, I think that's something to be considered before you vote, just on the wording of this and making an emergency proclamation. I don't know, it mentions, I think something in Item Ten somewhere that it, that if it was an emergency, or maybe I saw it in the charter, but it has to go through the typical ordinance process, whatever that may, maybe, I don't know how much longer that takes. And then, something else I was kind of curious on, unless anyone has a comment on kind of that portion. Something else I was curi-, curious on is at the, also at the end, so that same emergency clause, it looks very similar to Section Thirteen-O-Four of the city charter, but not verbatim. And so, I was just a little confused why, why it would be different and why we wouldn't be using what Section Thirteen-O-Four states, because, for instance, above it, the severability clause is verbatim to Section Thirteen-O-Three. So, it looks like there may be a little bit of discrepancy there.
I mean, that's language that I put in there. It's standard language that we use in our other ordinances, and it, we're following eleven O S, Section Fourteen-One-O-Three, the state statute as well.
Can you repeat that, please?
Eleven O S, Section Fourteen-Dash-One-O-Three. It deals with emergency clause to an ordinance.
That's the Oklahoma statute, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is not a verbatim quote, but that, it's a general statement as to why they're enacting the emergency clause if they choose to do so.
Okay. But shouldn't we have to follow what our charter says, though? I guess I'm just confused.
I believe they are. I believe they would. This language does follow that. It's been used routinely throughout my tenure at the city.
Okay. One other question backing up just a little bit, I apologize. On these changes, you mentioned a couple, can't get into them obviously, but each one, would they, each one be a ballot measure for the people, or would they be lumped together?
No, each, each question has to be separated.
All right.
Is that okay, Roger?
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time, that's-
Thanks so much, Mr. Spicer. Appreciate you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Are we going to continue calling it-
We can continue discussing.
Board of Freeholders, or can we make an amendment and change it to Charter Committee?
I think that, I think we can change it to Charter Review Committee, maybe?
That's, yeah, I-
Think that's okay?
If the, if the, the one who made the motion accepts the amendment.
I accept that amendment.
So, you're replacing Board of Freeholders with a Charter Review Committee?
Yes. Is that okay, Councilwoman Selby?
Yes.
Any other amendments that we need on this? Councilpersons? Okay, so we have a motion for this ordinance with the substitution of the offensive language regarding the board name to Charter Review Committee. Everything else remains as is. Do I hear a motion?
Well, you, you have a motion, Mr. Wooten.
Okay, Mr. Wooten, okay.
And Mr. Zimmerman.
Mr. Zimmerman, second. Very good. All right. Seeing no more discussion? Mr. Clerk, could you call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the emergency clause for this Ordinance Fourteen-Fifty. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion?
No.
We do have some discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you for the-
No, you're fine. I just want to say one more thing. I would ask that in this portion, you would consider that we, we just, we shouldn't be calling every, everything an emergency. I think that's, that's a slippery slope to play, so I just ask that you take that in consideration as you vote on this agenda item.
I appreciate the feedback. Any other discussion?
So, if we don't declare it an emergency, we just have to post the entire ordinance?
You have to publish the whole thing, then it doesn't go into effect for thirty days.
That's what I was going to ask, if it affected the timeline, so.
Additionally, the question of emergency must be ruled upon separately, as we're doing right now-
That's correct.
-and approved by an affirmative vote of three-quarters of the members of this body. Go ahead, Preston.
Sorry. I thought it was four-fifths on an emergency.
It, it, it ends up being the same thing and it-
It's three-fourths is the-
Three-fourths is-
Is that the language in the charter?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, seeing no more discussion, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
We put the item number eleven, which is to consider a motion to set a date for a special meeting to be held before the next regularly scheduled meeting. This would be to discuss the budget, I believe. Councilpersons, do you believe that we need this motion, or do you feel like we can submit any amendments or tweaks to the city manager and the city clerk as we work in the next week or so to finalize the budget?
We discuss it without a motion.
Yeah, you'll need a motion to-
Okay, I'll make a motion to set a date for a special meeting to be held before the reg-, next regularly scheduled meeting. Do I hear a motion?
A motion that we do not need a special meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, so we're not wanting to meet before another one, so I mean, we're just going to cool the budget, or what's, what's up with that?
I think that if, if there are, I mean, we talked for thirty minutes today around the amendments. I think Councilwoman Selby had some really good feedback about the memberships and the training opportunities, conferences. We had a few other pieces of feedback. We talked about, you know, streets and some amendments there. I think if, we could probably get a roll-up, you know, maybe a week prior to the June Fourth meeting, and, and then, you know, make sure we don't have any, I mean, worst case, we could always do a little tweak or a little amendment on June the Fourth in our meeting. But maybe if we can get a review of the, of the, I mean, we reviewed the budget a week ago, we could do a review, maybe a week, you know, each, each councilperson could get a packet with the, with the budget in it, and then we could-
We'll certainly have to send out a new budget.
Absolutely.
And we've had a lot of changes. We're going to have to rebalance the budget. There are some numbers in there that have to be, you know, the pest numbers in particular have to be precise. So, it's, it's going to take a minute.
Yep.
But, but we will try to get that as soon as we can, and, I mean, now's the time for the council, if they have other ideas or suggestions, you know, send them in.
Yep.
Let's, let's hear what people think. And I would caution, if you go, if you're going into the June Fourth meeting with the expectation that you'll be able to amend it, we need to make sure that the agenda item reads, "Consider Approval and Possible Amendment to." Other cities have gotten in trouble, frankly, for making amendments on the fly on a budget without notifying the public. So, and we, we traditionally do that, but I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Clerk, can you make sure we take a note to, to include that in the agenda item?
So, the items that we talked about tonight, like the items I've talked about, I mean, I'm going to vote no. We can't do, you know, include those things, and so, when will we know we're going to include those things?
I think we should include those things, Councilwoman Selby. Right?
Well, I mean, I, how does everybody else feel? We can't take a vote. How are you feeling?
I sat on this board to better my community, on the first education and this deal. So, I'm voting no on that, I mean.
Okay.
It's going to harm that all.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea to include those.
You have in front of you is just to set a motion. A motion instead of a special meeting.
We're discussing whether we should have a special meeting. And we're not voting, we're telling how we feel.
Okay.
As a therapist, I want to know how they feel.
I hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I feel confident that we, that we, as individual city councilpersons, can give our feedback to, to the city clerk, through the city manager, and, and get that input in, and we can reach a consensus. So, I, I agree that we can not hold a meeting. Any other discussion on that? All right, seeing no other discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you call the vote?
The motion is for no meeting.
No meeting.
So, if you vote yes, then that's for no meeting, just to be clear. Pillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
All right, councilpersons, is there any new business?
There's no new business before the council tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Very good. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each council person to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions. It's not intended for conduct of city business by members of the public, public, of the, members of the public body. Uh, Councilwoman Selby?
I wanna thank you all for coming out tonight. It is a pleasure to see this room full. I'd also like to give a special shout-out and thanks to the Mustang Mayor, Brian Kreider, in the back of the room. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Councilperson Shriver?
Just wanna say thanks for coming out. A lot of familiar faces. Um, hope we get to tell some answers. Um, to the admins we worked with last week, um, I think those, I haven't been a whole lot of part of these budget meetings. I have been a lot of part of, uh, other budget meetings and in big business. Um, I think that was one of the best-held, conducted, uh, budget meetings we've had, um, that I've had, maybe not in the side of the city, but, um, kudos to y'all admins that, um, are doing the day-to-day out there.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Um, I just wanna say how nice it was to have a former student here tonight, representing teachers and, and receiving that proclamation. Uh, Quinton is a, a great person, so it's good to see her having success.
You say she was one of your students?
Yes. Yes, I'm that old.
Vice Mayor Wooten?
Uh, I wanna thank all the directors, uh, on their hard work. Mitch, your team did a great job. Um, it was a great budget meeting, um, and I appreciate it. Also, I'd like to thank the members of the Charter Review Committee and for stepping up. Thank you for stepping up and, um, offering to help your community. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna list a few events that are happening here in Yukon, and then make a few final comments. Uh, Friday Fun Days, every Friday beginning June the seventh, with Touch a Truck at Chisholm Trail Park, begins at ten AM. And the location, it moves to various parks and facilities in Yukon. I'm sure, check out the, uh, website, and it's free to everyone. All ages are welcome, and the ac- activities are geared towards kids. Concerts in the park, I'm looking forward to this one. It's, uh, going to be taking place every Thursday, beginning on June the sixth. The time is from seven PM to eight thirty. Location, Chisholm Trail Park in the Large Gazebo. It's free to everyone, all ages are welcome. There's a new band every week, and concessions will be available. The aquatics, uh, the City Splash, Kimball Bay, and Sunrise Splash Pad, open for the summer on Saturday, May twenty-fifth. That's this Saturday. And Triple Tour, Saturday, June fifteenth. Join the cities of Yukon, Bethany, and War Acres for a tri-city garage sale, shopping, Route Sixty-Six cruise, various activities. I'd like to echo what many of my, uh, fellow council persons mentioned. The hard work of our department directors in a four-hour-long budget meeting last week was outstanding. Their professionalism shined. Uh, I wanna give a special thanks, um, to, um, both the, at the time, the, uh, Assistant City Manager, now the Acting City Manager, Mitchell Horton. I really appreciate the many hours, um, that he has spent pulling t- things together and stepping into that role, and, uh, look forward to working with, with him and, uh, with our broader professionals at the city as they interact with him. Um, thank you all for your comments this evening. I appreciate your engagement in the vibrant life of our city. At this time, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.